All rise. Katie Christopher.
Well, we're all good.
Say it again. I left it for years.
Down the county conditions, down at station.
Okay. Mike Nunery, do you mind giving the invocation?
Sure. Sheriff and Father, thank you for bringing us here together. Thank you for allowing us to democracy to be able to do these meetings and do things in a democratic way. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions. This is our yearly election night, so we need to make wise decisions that work well for the county. All these things, we ask in your gracious name. Amen.
Amen.
Larry Holland.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Emily Coleman.
You'll have to put mine in, I'm here.
May.
Steven Show.
One. Okay, we have a form.
I'd like to make a motion. We need to amend the agenda to have an election tonight for the chairman appropriate.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
So Nunery and Arnold. We're gonna do a roll call on that. Everybody, yeah.
We're voting for amendment, right?
Yes, for amendment.
This is a.
To amend it to, yeah. This is for to change it for the chair and protein that needs to be put in there.
Mine says agenda, doesn't matter.
Mine does too.
That's the way I vote.
But it.
Mr. Reverend, how do you vote for changing the agenda?
Changing the agenda, I'll vote.
Miss, uh.
Half, sixteen, yes.
Okay, so now we're back into the normal.
And we're getting the tape. Are you ready? Let's go. Are we ready?
The computer, or read for me.
Approval of the agenda.
Now, Chairman, let the motion, Roseanne Ward, the chairman.
We've gotta do approval of agenda first on.
I thought we did.
We did the call team.
You need to vote before now.
Yeah, but we can't.
Yeah, you gotta vote for the agenda.
Yeah, but every second for the.
He can't do that yet.
Yeah, we gotta do the agenda first, he said.
Yeah, you added chairman and chairman of the chairman, now you will approve the agenda without adding to it.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda.
Get a motion second for the. I can't see it. I can't see nothing, y'all.
All fair.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're gonna take nominations now up on the floor for chairman.
Madam Chair, let me nominate Roseanne Ward.
I'll second her.
Do we have any more nominations? No more from the floor? Okay. All those who, since it's only one, do we have to do a roll call? Okay, all those who want, are voting for Roseanne Ward, put yes. Is it not on there?
You have to be roll called. So I'm gonna call your name, you tell me yes or no for Roseanne being the chairman. Does that sound all right?
Yes.
Marty Douglas.
Yes.
Debbie Bane.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Brett Burke.
Yes.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Gary Furt.
Yes.
Dwayne Fowler.
Yes.
Sonny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Barry Holland.
Yes.
Mike Nunery.
Yes.
Roseanne.
Yes.
Jerry Price.
Yes.
And Jeff Murphy.
Yes.
I've got fifteen yes, one pass, motion carries for Roseanne to be the chairman.
We go into chairman of the chairman if you want to. Anyone from the floor for the pro tam?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jeff Murphy.
Murphy. Who second it? Phil, okay. Anyone else like to nominate? Okay, then we'll take a roll call.
Keith Arnold.
Yes.
Marty Douglas.
Yes.
Debbie Bane.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Brett Burke.
Yes.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Gary Furt.
Yes.
Dwayne Fowler.
Yes.
Sonny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Barry Holland.
Yes.
Mike Nunery.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Jerry Price.
Yes.
Jeff Murphy.
Ayes.
We have fifteen yes, one pass, motion carries.
Next on the agenda is the citizens forum. We have one name, or two names, Nick Bolton. Nick, would you come forth, please?
My wife and I bought land here three years ago, and. When I first moved here, I had talked with Kenny, said, I don't wanna be known, I don't wanna have to become a problem. I'm gonna become a problem. You guys waste more money in this county. You know, I've seen small towns, small counties, start from nothing, and the boomers destroying. And that's what you guys are doing to this county. A post was made today, it was talking about getting industry in here last time. Even the company's been here for ten years, that's the way, they have fifty-five sub machines and jobs for males all summer, every summer. Never once have they filled all the jobs. Not because they didn't find the right people, because nobody wants to work. People are moving here because they wanna get away from that. They don't want more of that. We don't want bigger, whatever. You know, people here just don't want that, because the boomers don't want that. You guys are about to be out of it, and then late Gen Xers are gonna be picking up, having to clean and mess up, just like these buildings. You're trying to buy a building for a man, they can't even stay on the phone with you. They're on the phone twice with Mark, twice they sign up on him. By the, who allegedly works for the people, then hangs up on you, but he needs a private building. Deal with the buildings you already had, whether it was your mess or not, clean it up. That's why all you guys got put in, you guys ran some allegedly, make it better, right? Clean up your mess. Don't buy another building. I mean, how was that building? Can't buy now. Does that have asbestos in it? Because if you break open a wall in it, it's a complete cleanup. Go see how much that cost. If it was your money, would you spend it the same way? Then the only person that made any sense that wanted to get up here and talk was Rocky, and you just totally dismissed him. Yes, you did. You totally dismissed him. When he was talking about them own taxes, it wasn't, we'll look into it, we'll find out, sit down and shut up, basically what you said.
No, sir, I did not say sit down and shut up. I would never say that.
Did you understand why I said basically? That was what you did.
Mr. Preston's time was up, we have a five-minute rule, and his time was up, and he had already gone over his time.
And I wanted to hear.
So he was given extra time.
And I wanted to hear.
Pardon?
And I wanted to hear him, I said back there, I wanna hear what he has to say.
He had five minutes.
You didn't get two shits about it. Didn't care at all.
Just like you have five minutes.
Right. I know, what I say don't matter, I understand that. But there's people in this town, so everybody in here is a legible Christian, right? Because you pray before a government meeting, like, that's appropriate, when it's not. There's a federal lawsuit right now, there's a man in Henry County, the lawsuit, they're not glad to join the lawsuit. To stop the prayer before meetings here. Because what you guys are doing is you're spending money that's been extorted from people that don't wanna pay it. There's nothing you offer that I want, that I'm forced to pay money. That's called extortion. So that's the money you're dealing with. I don't think Jesus would appreciate that very much. I mean, I must said about this, because I will not pay another dollar in taxes. So who in this room is willing to kill me to take my land? I don't pay that other dollar. I know you're looking funny, because you think like the norming, like when somebody just says that, you know, they saw your land off, you're just gonna leave. I'm not that person. You're gonna have to kill me to get me off of it. Are you willing to do that? Because if you're not, stop spending all this money that nobody has. You already have these other buildings, deal with them. Your mess, deal with it. You volunteered to deal with it, now deal with it. Don't buy another building that you're gonna get put through another mess. And Mark sits up there and just tells a blatant lie. Keith had to know he was lying about the codes. Well, you don't have to be up to code unless you're changing the house, it's not remodeled, it's not the outside structure being changed. Everybody in here knows that's a lie. Nobody still just said nothing, why? If you buy a building, it's gotta be under code. If you remodel the bathroom, it's gotta be up to code. There's asbestos in the walls or in the ceiling, guess what? It's a complete tear out. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is anybody gonna check into that? You gonna have someone get up on the roof and check out the roof, the cost of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace? Or we gonna be stuck with another building that we can't use?
May I respond if he wants us to? Uh, the very next day after last meeting, the codes enforcer came over and inspected the building and said that.
The codes enforcer started inspecting.
Do you mind if I finish? You asked a question, I was just gonna tell you the answer.
Okay, go ahead.
He came over and inspected the building, and it had been completely remodeled in twenty eighteen. He walked through and everything was good. The only thing we have to do to the building to open it back up to the public is put two handrails by the toilet.
All right, you get a wheelchair in?
Sir?
Will we check it through the door?
Yeah. It's all to code, the only thing that was missing was the two handrails.
Okay, so what about these other buildings we have? Any plans on ever dealing with those? Or just gonna kick it down the road to the next committee to have to do?
What building are you talking about?
We'll start with the Walmart building, we'll start with that one, then we'll get that.
Well, we have a contract on it for it to be sold by November ninth, it's a tractor supply.
How much? How much you losing on?
Uh, making two hundred thousand.
What company?
Tractor Supply.
Tractor Supply's gonna buy it. You're dead, what about the other one?
Which other one?
How many buildings do you have? I mean, you have the old Sears building, right?
Yeah, and it's being remodeled right now, it's already under construction.
For what?
To be a senior citizen center and a ag extension office.
Okay, and we gotta pay for that?
Yes.
That's money that comes out of property taxes, right?
Of course.
Of course it is. So is anybody's property taxes going up the next few years over any of this?
No, actually, they're using ARPA money that the government gave us in the form of a grant.
Right, forms of grants. So there's grants offered right now for body cams, federal grants, body cams, dash cams.
Sir?
Body cams and dash cams, there's federal grants for that right now. People are afraid to come to these meetings.
The sheriff can apply for those.
Oh, I know you can, I know you can, but you won't. There's people that don't come to these meetings because they know what can happen to you. It's very simple to get rid of somebody with a mouth in this town. And I'm gonna keep putting a bigger, bigger target on my back. FOIA requests that don't get filled, or it's gonna start filing lawsuits over it. It already happened twice with the sheriff's department, and I'm gonna start digging everywhere else. Because everybody knows the little boy systems won't play here, there's people making money where they shouldn't be making money. Deals being done. Wait, why did the city, the county look at the building right across the street over here? Paul, something's for sale?
No.
Why not? It was an option, why didn't they? Oh, that's right, Mark the mayor bought it.
Yeah, I did.
Right. So, like, everybody knows what goes on around here. We're not stupid to the game.
I don't know what you're talking about, other than.
Of course you don't.
The building's falling down, and it's gonna cost a lot to fix it.
Hundred thousand dollars.
We're not gonna discuss anything like that, that's Mr. Ward's private.
Of course, of course it is.
Business, but.
Right.
You have eleven seconds left. We gave you an extra minute because he did interrupt.
Okay. The money you're spending is stored from people. If you're, I, the praying stuff, I'll be happy to jump in the lawsuit over that, and we'll shut that down for you to cost a big county much money, which I don't wanna do, because I'm not a thief. Because I believe in my God. I don't come in here and run through the motions and use words like democracy isn't a democracy. It's a representative republic, anytime the founder spoke, democracy isn't a negative matter.
Mr. Bolton, I go to a lot of state meetings, and at all the meetings, there's prayer before every meeting.
And they're all unconstitutional. It violates my First Amendment rights. And it's a total disgrace, because there's nobody here that's a Christian that is doing this job the way you guys are doing it.
Okay, you're out of town, do you want to close with one remark or just a few remarks?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome. Christie Bolton.
I'm gonna speak, she wants to.
I wanted to speak for just something that he said. May I?
Yes.
Don't judge people until you know them, I am a Christian.
Okay.
Totally, and I did not fund votes for the purchase.
I know you did, I know you did. It wasn't about that.
So, I mean, it's not all of us, some of us are trying to do.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I see what happens on that screen when there's something to be talked about, there's no debate, there's. Yes, 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 yes. I understand that.
Some of, some of them here may not be Christian, but I.
At the same time, you have to understand, every dollar you spend is extorted from people that don't wanna pay it. There's nothing this county offers that I want. Keep your schools, keep your inmates, keep your fire departments, keep the sheriff's department, keep it all, I don't want any of it. I'll be completely separate from the county, the city. I'm still forced to pay, or bad things will happen to me, right? But we're free, land is free, right? But you can't ever own any of that. Why? Because people wanna spend money. They wanna look good for a congressman who might come to town every two or three or five years for a vote. It is totally ridiculous. We don't need another building so he can have an office. You know what? I volunteered to close that office off. However he needs it, so he has his little space. I'll volunteer to do the work for him. I would pay for the materials, how about that? We solve that problem, don't need another five hundred thousand dollar building. Done deal. We're not gonna go for that, though. Because Mark wants a new building, like, again, does anybody in here know that the hall is for sale? You think it's the mayor of the county, which I don't even know what the mayor of a county does.
It wasn't for sale.
You just bought it. I don't need to know. Well, it was for sale because it got bought.
No, it wasn't for sale.
Everything's for sale.
It was not for sale.
So if you wanna make some smart decisions, what you do is you take empty buildings in the county, and you lease them out, long-term leases. Never had to buy another building, after you do whatever you did in the beginning, then you just pay monthly lease for it. You never had to buy another building again. There's eighteen people in here right now, I count a county of two hundred fifty thousand people, how many commissioners there were? Three. You know why? Because it cuts taxes. Three for two hundred fifty thousand, how many people's in this county? Five thousand, maybe?
Sixteen, I think.
Let's call it fifty. Three for two hundred fifty thousand, can't justify all this. All this is nonsense. And what turns into is just, yes, 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 yes. This would be the easiest county to launder money in, whether you're the school superintendent, the mayor, whoever you are. If you got access to money, easy money. How did this, by the way, who gave the hundred seventy thousand dollars to the city to buy new patrol cars? Anybody wanna own up to that one?
That was a grant from the state for the school resource officers.
Oh, and so, and they bought new vehicles with it? So that's not resource officers, that's vehicles. Last time I checked, the school's resource officers, state schools.
It's what the grant was for, is for school resource officers, is that correct, Phil?
It happened. And who?
That didn't come from your property tax, that came from the state tax.
I guess you still pays that tax.
You pay state tax.
Well, I live off the state. State don't provide nothing to me. I don't, do you not understand, I don't want anything. If I, if I, if I, you know, could get it, I wouldn't take it. Good, I'm sorry.
Hi, Commissioner Arnold, let's, let's let him finish out.
I pay for it.
Commissioner Arnold.
Gasoline taxes.
Let's let him finish out what he wants to say, and then, then you can come back with a comment if you want to, after his time is up.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if this is all my time, I was gonna wanna give, but what you need to understand is, as a Christian, the money you're spending is extorted from people. Do you understand what that means? Are you okay, you want somebody to put in a gun, just grandma's head, and saying, you're gonna give me a five hundred dollars out of your wallet, or bad things are gonna happen to you? No, it's crime. You'd be out of your mind to support that. Yet we sit here and throw people's money around like it's all your money. Instead of going the up way, you need to be going the down way. It's that spend more money, spend less money, that's your job. I know it's funny. I get it, it's funny. But, as somebody who has property in this county, I hold issue with you praying. So either, they get more silence, I agree to that. That's actually what Henry County is doing right now, at all their government meetings, for the same reason. The prayer, the judgment, you wanna pray? Pray on yourself somewhere else, because as of now, it's scrolling through the motions. You guys need to represent the people you here represent, all twenty-seven of you, or eighteen of you, however many there is. Eighteen, which is completely insane. It's a complete waste of money, time, resources, and people. And then the only people that had anything to say was totally dismissed, Rocky, Duane, and, I'm sorry, I forget your name, man. All three of you. They had anything to say last time we were here. Totally dismissed. And you did, you, Rocky, when he came up, talking about the taxes, you basically said, your actual words were, you were wrong once, they're not here to defend themselves, so pretty much, then you probably just told him to sit down. When I sat back there and said, clearly said, I wanna hear what he has to say. And I got a voice, but what you guys need to do, so people will start coming in here, is get body cams and dash cams on your police cars, because then people won't be afraid to get pulled over, like me, I don't do drugs. You know how easy it is for Samantha to shove in next car? Pretty easy.
Mr. Bolton, your time is up, sir.
Especially when we have police that break the law. City, counties, both the made aware, they break the law. And they continue to break the law.
This is, you have one, this is your first one, and your time is up.
Go ahead.
Okay.
There'll be fifteen more ones.
Pardon me?
And people are still listening.
Your time is up, it doesn't matter, that's in our policy for five minutes, and you've had another five minutes, you've probably had a total of about fifteen minutes to talk.
And I can sit here for three hours talking about it. Do what's right, quit doing what's best for you. I don't know what your political aim is, or what your financial aim is, but do what's best for the county.
Your time is up, Mr. Bolton.
I understand that.
Do you mind returning back to your seat so we can continue on with the meeting?
Right. Disignore, think about what I said.
Commissioner Price or Commissioner Arnold, who wants to go first? Do you wanna comment?
Mayor, for clarification purposes, on First Bank Building, lots of talk around, is the building ADA friendly? Did the inspector follow ADA guidelines when he inspected the building?
Yes, of course.
Is he going to provide a written?
He already has.
Will that be available for review?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, that was the only two names that we had on the citizens forum. We're moving on to number three, which is the commissioners forum. Any commissioner would like to speak at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I was gonna talk about is, you know, I don't think anybody on this commission has not got the best interest of this county in their heart. I think everybody that's elected to this commission votes a way that they feel like is in the best interest of this county. I do feel like that, I've made some bad votes in the past, I didn't always go along with what the majority wanted. And the majority wants, you know, the majority wrote. So I did not go out and criticize the commission for buying the property at the interstate that I voted against. Because it turned out, it worked out good, we turned around and sold it to a company, we got, you know, industry there, they're doing jobs, they've saved the county money by winning bids on some asphalt work and stuff we've done. What I do have a problem with, normally I don't look at Facebook, I don't pay a whole lot of attention to the Facebook, everybody has their right to earn an opinion. But in order to move forward on anything we do, you gotta have teamwork. Football team can't win with one person playing the game. A man cannot hook his two horses up to a plow, have one facing north and one facing south, inspector get anything flat, you know? But what I have a problem with is, I think that we as commissioners should be working together. And right here in my hand, I have the vote from last month's meeting. And what I've noticed is, this, this post was from one of our fellow commissioners. Commissioner Bain puts in here that the mayor wants a First Bank building for an office, four hundred eighty thousand dollars. Here's the vote. Remember this come election night. Ms. Bain was on the side, well, the vote said was, you know, that didn't win that thing, so she's advocating that ten of us, and she may be right. Don't need to beat her anymore, that we need to get beaten in the election. Ain't much teamwork involved in that. Another person puts on Facebook, well, they changed the rules, I'm making it a three, two-thirds majority. The reason the rules was changed is keep them having to pull money out of the reserve fund, or unsigned, fine, signed, first fund balance, we could put it in the next year's budget. Didn't have to do nothing out of the reserve fund. But according to Ms. Bain, they pulled a trick. Insinuating that something underhanded was done, which was, only thing that was done is good business, you know? Now, the last one, the property committee meeting, when we was discussing that building, Ms. Bain asked me, says, did you have anything to do with selling that building? I looked at Ms. Bain, blank, and I told her, no, if we did, I'd have got more money out of it than what the bank was selling it for, because it's a good building, it's worth the money that we spent. And I told them that if we went inside the building, you can build a breezeway, you put a wall down the middle of the lobby, that you could be divided up, you could have a mayor on one side, you could have something in the back, and one on the other, so there's a lot of space there. Ms. Bain misunderstood, I'm assuming, because she didn't, surely didn't think I was crazy enough to think that we need to build a breezeway from the First Bank to the courthouse. Ray Charles could see that that won't work. Okay? We need to get our facts together. Another person puts on there, something about their commissioner, that they didn't like what they said, and Ms. Bain said, I hope you remember that come election night. One of us is advocating that ten of us get beaten, because we don't agree with what Debbie agrees with. I don't think that's the way to do business. But what really didn't make me mad, it just so fastly pissed me off. And excuse me if I offended you for saying that word, but somebody put on there, I ain't got all the checks is here, but it said, you know, about wanting to know who the real estate agent was, last month, I told him, blank, I didn't have nothing to do with it. Somebody put on here, says, who's the listing agent? Somebody said, you just gotta, you know, buy the buyer, you don't have to, you get part of the commission. Somebody said, I'd like to know who the agent is, do it. This is what offended me, is for a fellow commissioner, somebody that works with us, that we're trying to work on the same ball team, we're trying to make big county a better place, put on there. And insinuate that the mayor and I, or any commissioner, done anything wrong. I'm sure Mark cut him in on this thing. I dare you, baby, to put something on the Facebook that's nowhere close to true. That's offensive, that's slander. You know, if you wanna make a statement, get your facts straight. That's all I ask. Say what you want to about me, I got X skin, I've been in this for forty years, I ain't, I care about anything, don't bother me. If you're gonna put something on Facebook, listen to it, and make sure you quote people right. You know, you want this commission to spend ten million dollars. You know, you want this commission to spend ten million dollars on a work release program after jail? You know, you'll say, "Well, there's grants available for it." I haven't seen a grant, and I sure haven't seen no group grant, but we didn't even come up with a plan of what a work release program was gonna be. We did go buy some land next to it, a lot, for fifty thousand dollars, but that ain't a misappropriation of funds, because Debbie wants this project done. It's an honorable project.
Commissioner Arnold, it's time for you to close your, close your, pause your comment.
But if you wanna get, if you wanna get a hair, and you wanna slander somebody, make sure you get your facts straight, Debbie. Don't go ahead and sell somebody that I got a cutoff or something that's not there. Call First Bank, ask them if they paid the commission, they can tell you right quick, I didn't have nothing to do with it, the mayor didn't do nothing underhanded, and a shame will be putting that on Facebook.
Any other commissioner?
May I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
First of all, yes, I did tell the people that, because when people go against what, when we go against what the people want, they have the right to remember this come election time. If we're not doing our job in representing the people, and the people clearly did not want this building bought. And, and so, I mean, I, I have the right to tell them that. You have to remember it come vote time, if, if we're not doing our job in representing the people-
So, you don't plan to have ten people voting, you just had people telling them it was a good idea? I think the, the ones that voted for it, I'm sure we had people tell us the same thing. Yeah, that's a good deal, the county needs it extra right. The gentleman here may not agree with that, and he has that right to disagree. But to get out there and, and promote that you want ten of your district commissioners beat it the next election, you gonna lose their vote.
I just told them to remember, I will vote become election time.
I hope they remember, you know?
And, and clearly, the people under their life-
We have, I'm sure the mayor cut him in.
I don't know if you did or not, I know people, they put on committees, and, you know, felt, you know-
I'm not on a committee, I'm not a buddy, I'm sure the mayor cut him in.
I don't know, you spent two hours down there in the mayor's office before.
I ain't never spent two hours in the mayor, I work for a living, I don't know what you do to make your living, but I work for mine.
Commissioners, let's don't argue.
That ain't arguing, that's a safe area.
I just wanted to explain why I put that on there, because the people have the right to vote however they want, and if we're not doing what they want, then, then they have the right to get somebody else to represent them.
They're hard, they're hard to see, and you gotta get a job, and that's what happens there.
Your job of working, is representing the people.
Okay. Any other commissioner? Um, Mr. Bolton, we don't have people from the audience interrupt, please, if you can't hold your voice back, your comments. Well, and if you can't, then this is your warning, you'll be asked to leave. Debbie, do you wanna finish?
Oh, they're going, go ahead.
Of course, I don't do the Facebook thing, I've planned a call or two a few times. What I'm worried about is, is it passing codes. We've got a problem with the Sears building all week, see what happened there, we've worked off a metric. I've talked to the codes guy, he hasn't approved that building, local codes. What happens is, we talk about this-
Hey, I wanna, I wanna, I'm sorry, I don't mean, no, I wanna correct something.
Clear that, clear that.
The, the very next day after the court meeting last month, he contacted me, and wanted to go to the building, and he inspected it, and everything was good itself, putting two handrails in the bathroom. It's ADA compliant, it's been completely remodeled in twenty eighteen, so-
And here's what you gotta look at, Mark, just like the problem-
I've already got the letter, I told you that.
You got the letter from who?
The codes guy.
Local guy.
Yeah.
You can talk with the state.
You don't have to. There's no change, there's no, there's no changes being made.
Just hear me out, we didn't have to deal with it. Alright, codes guy says it don't matter, she's got the ADA compliant with the bathrooms. We've got the Sears building going on down here, uh, see what we've done with it with renderings, now we've had to bring in an architect. Anytime you change any local building, you gotta bring in, do a render, you an architect on. This guy had a bathroom upgrade, that's fine, if everybody wants to spend it on this time. That's, it, it's got some work that's gonna have to be done to get for the estimate public. It's not a restaurant, I love marketing, turkey's long, but the other side of it is, the people do say that they don't wanna spend no more money. The reason we changed it over, and I don't know why we changed it over from pulling from debt service to do it a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but swapping it over to debt service, you've extended the loan for years, you wanna pay eighty thousand dollars, every prime is eight percent interest on that building, unless we pay it off early. I'm telling you, there's a lot more to this than what it is, I don't think there's no foul bullshit or whatever going on, but we're gonna be out some money. Well, I know we'd love to have a nice place. We've talked about moving one of the, or one that goes down to the old Sears building, this one does asbestos now, so we can't do that. Keith says, "We don't really," I say, "Well, a gray window would be nice, a driver's window would pay your bills especially." Mark gets the rest of, gets the rest of the courthouse along this room. That's job is supposed to be completed in first of March, somewhere along in there, correct? But, if we got asbestos in that fifty-six year old building, but you think this building has, I know tile's been changed before, I would love to have that building, but we need, it's just gonna take some more jack. The reason we did put the hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there was had to use that money to buy the sheriff's cars, right? Correct, something like that, nothing, nothing bad, I'm just saying. We're, we're not, is that not right, Phil? When we got ready to pay the hundred and twenty thousand dollars and put it in the budget, we were, we ended up having to have some money for the sheriff's cars, is that correct?
One hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
The hundred and twenty thousand dollars we had budgeted for it, to put in debt service for three years, with, so it wouldn't go for full debt service.
No, that, this is all-
Well, anyways, we didn't have the money.
This is all done after the budget-
Right, but we didn't have the money then, is it something we wanna spend? I'm gonna vote no, and I'm gonna see it approved.
The original was, we took a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from, uh, Capital Projects, from the down payment, and then paid the rest.
Why didn't we do that?
Because it didn't make sense, that money should not be used for down payments when you're making three full payments out of debt service.
That's fine, it's good info, that's it. I don't still wanna see us have to spend a lot more money like we're having to spend the Sears building to match the state local codes for other deals. That's it, I would love to see it as Rwanda's, or the next county clerk's office, or whoever's in that office to have a chance. Now, I know you cannot do driver's licenses in there, but you can take FOGs, you can put your veterans person in there, and make it productive. Uh, but, I just thought, I just wanna spend more money. I just, I thought, I'm done.
Commissioner Melton, would you comment on the remark that Mr. Fowler made about the money? How much money now it's going to cost, and how that's all changed?
The, the original way it was presented was to take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Capital Projects to do the down payment, and that would be your first payment, then there would be three more payments, uh, basically equal payments, coming from debt service, which didn't make sense, because Capital Projects money can be used for multiple things. Uh, could be used for the volleyball, or the parks, or whatever of that nature, if you so chose. The money from debt service is limited on what it can be used for, therefore it made more sense to take all four payments, if you're gonna do four payments, out of debt service. I think we can do it in two payments, but, that, that will remain to be said in the next year's budget. But, that was the reason for we're not taking the money out of the capital account. That all came about, uh, going after the budget, this was all actually-
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was gonna do three payments out of it.
Yeah.
What's, what's our interest rate on that?
It's below six, five-two-five, or five-seven-hundred.
Real bad.
So, we keep it on debt service, it's gonna be four years for five-two-five?
Uh, not necessarily, depends on what, yeah, depending on what, what you're ready to present itself next year.
The estimation wants it, that's fine, my people, my district, and, and my family, eighty-five-hundred percent have said, "Hey, we've got no things going on." The other side of it is, I just don't wanna get into it like we gobbled the Sears building with the ag extension. We've got a great building down there, maybe it's got some asbestos in it, maybe this one has it, but, you know, that we can use, so, you know, we got the electric going. That's it, that's fine, I just hate to see us keep spending money on something. We've gotten really lucky, Mark's done a great job, we pushed, pushed the Walmart building, looks like we've got some great things going on for there, we get that back on the table, paper, the tax roll, and collecting money off it. Uh, we've got some things going on up there, y'all know how I tell about the asphalt, you got two companies doing the same thing, ain't making nothing, they're pumping their own rock in here for, for third roads, way out in Stanley, ain't pulling no manual taxes, we get a few jobs off of it. I'd love to see a motel, or a Cracker Barrel, or something of that nature, I know it's tough, but we sold it, it's fine. But, I just don't wanna end up spending no more money, um, on, on what we're gonna have to do to make it, and I'd love to see it, just like we did when we put in it, that it means state and local codes, and anytime I get office thing down here, or anything I build, I've gotta have an occupancy release on it, I love to see that right there, and I think that, and we do what you want to, everybody will vote for it, whatever you want to do. I just think we're spending too much money for, for what we got going on, and that's it.
Uh, Commissioner Melton, when you stated the money was just, um, changed from where we were going to take the money, we just changed where the money was coming from for this payment. There were no rules changed, no rules at all, that, when you take money from a different source, that's just changing where you're getting your money from, that's not a changing rules. So, we, there were no rules changed at all, at that meeting.
It extends the debt, how long, it's just like my new car, they got ten-five, I hang bar five-hundred and sixty months, what we do is seven-two.
Do we have any other commissioner? Before we end? Okay.
Uh, in response to me putting the post on Facebook, that was no different, it, it was already on there, anybody that watched the meeting would have seen the post up there of how everybody voted for that building. It's not like I put some, exposed some secret thing, it was already on Facebook, just like, we're on Facebook right now. And twice, Commissioner Arnold, you had thoned up to me about that, uh, work release program. That land only costs fifty thousand dollars. The building's gonna be done with the grant. That is one program that is going to put money back into the county, which other things that we have done is not going to put money back into the county, so.
Any other commissioner?
Yes, on response. Gonna be paying for the grant, there's not a grant, we don't have one, is one thing. We did pay fifty thousand dollars for a lot, I agree to that, I think, you know, that's true. Workout program, you can give a grant for a hundred thousand, ten million dollars, six million, that don't cover the deputies, that don't cover the workers, and employees, so it's gonna cost the county money. And I think they might should get five or ten people in there if they end up building. I'm just saying, and I ain't saying it ain't a noble, uh, cause, I'm just saying, if you want somebody, if you wanna work towards anything, being positive, the best way to work towards it is working together, and not getting on Facebook and slandering your other commissioners, telling them they done tricks, and I'm sure they cut him in. That's what, that's what I don't like.
Okay.
You're right, the vote was up there, it ain't changing, we were voted to buy the building, we've got a letter from the county, from the codes officer, so as far as I know, it's a done deal. You know, peoples wanna have different opinions, you know, in two years, some of us will be here, some of us may not even think about being here next week, I don't have a clue. But, my thing is, the fact that you went out and slandered the mayor, and slandered me, insinuating that people done something underhand, and you know good and well, that ain't the way it was, it was, and I told you in that other meeting, I had nothing to do with it. That's what offended me, I don't, this gentleman out here, I've met him before, you know, he may not like me, he may say stuff about me on Facebook, that's his right. But he's not a fellow commissioner that we're trying to work together on, on project, and you're out here telling him, let's kick them all off, you know?
Okay, I, I think we've talked enough on that subject, we need, we need to move on. Uh, next is number four on the agenda, county mayor, you got any remarks?
Had enough.
Um, Mr. Melton?
Oh, no, I'm not getting into this. Ah, come on.
Okay, number five on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, I need a motion and a second.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Burke, and a second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? None likewise, motion carried. Number six is the report of the public utilities, motion and a second, please. Commissioner Price and Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? None likewise, motion carried. Number seven is resolution number one, is to appoint Barry Holland to the Benton County Airport Board to fulfill an unexpired term. Motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any discussion? There are none, so, please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried. Fifteen yes, one opposed down. Resolution two is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents received from miscellaneous refunds to various line items for expenditure. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions or discussion? I see none, so everyone please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Resolution number three is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of four hundred and sixteen dollars received from the state for early childhood, childhood education pre-K to the school's budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any questions? I think there are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Resolution four is another resolution from Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of forty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents received from the state for the special education preschool grant to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Resolution five is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars received from the state for salary equity to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? Okay, everyone please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Resolution six is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of eighty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents to a proper line item for expenditures within the ARPA budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Burke, and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions?
What's the other construction, I mean, what we got, is that something to the Sears building, or?
No, it's a line item that we have to pay it out of, uh, the grant came in, we had to put it in the line item to be able to disperse it, and that's just the one that we use for that.
Any other questions? There are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Resolution seven is a mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to the West Tennessee River Basin to cover shortfall. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Holland. Any questions? I think there are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carried, sixteen yes. Number fourteen on your agenda is the appointing of notaries. We have five people, we have Pam Brazil, Lori Pierce, Kayla Lewis, Charles Hicks, and Sharon Bain. Motion and a second, please, to approve their notaries. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Nunry. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? We're down to number fifteen on the agenda, which is any other business. We have two res, more resolutions.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to suspend the rules to take up the resolutions. Eight for nine.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend- Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules so that we can bring resolution number eight and number nine to the floor. We have a second by Commissioner Lashley.
Mr. Christ.
I just question that chairman. Um, since these resolutions have gone through committee, they weren't added after committee, is it necessary to suspend the rules?
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda. It was not on the agenda, so you have to suspend the rules.
Well, I don't, that's not exactly your comment, is it? What you're asking?
Is, is it necessary to suspend the rules if you added, uh, resolutions that have gone through committee?
I think your question is, is this treated as very important, which would allow us to suspend, suspend the rules? Or could it have waited till next month? Is that what you're saying?
There, there's certain criteria around suspending the rules. And my understanding is, it's for emergencies, it's for things that will wait. Uh, you know, when there's a shortfall somewhere unexpected and it comes up, you just have to act in action. But the question is, do we always suspend the rules because we have? We've got two resolutions that we've already accomplished.
Well, we, we don't have to, but.
We only need to be as long as I had, Chairman, we didn't amend it to anything else. So that would have given the regulation.
Didn't we used to have a cutoff time on creating resolutions?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
We, we always have had a cutoff time, and that's why these resolutions were brought in after. We felt like the sheriff needed this money, so we went ahead and put it on here. If y'all don't want to vote for it, or suspend the rules, that's perf, no, that's perfectly fine, we'll bring it back up next month. But we felt like it's something that probably needed to be heard this month.
My, my question is around the suspension of the cutoff.
Oh, I agree. We did it quite often, and I just didn't clarify that tonight, thank you.
Charlie and I will discuss this about adding resolutions after the agenda at a later date. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to suspend the rules to bring up resolution eight and nine. And that's by Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Lashley. All in favor? Vote, please. Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion carried, sixteen yes.
Resolution eight is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars the law enforcement equipment line item for expenditures. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions for the sheriff?
Question. This is money's already in your budget correction?
This money was appropriated last year for a vehicle that we had, we didn't have the equipment for it. The equipment didn't come in, so if anybody paid for it then, so the money was appropriated.
Any other question? If there are none, everyone please vote. Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion carried, sixteen yes.
Resolution number nine is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents received from, from a reimbursement for the Health Department cares grant to a proper line item for expenditures within the ARPA budget. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions about this for the mayor? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion carried, sixteen yes.
Do we have any other business? Okay, um, I have a couple announcements. This Thursday night is the regional meeting for the, um, West Tennessee County Commissioners. And I spoke with Mr. Charlie Curtis today, and he asked me to confirm a head count. We could, who all is planning to go to that meeting? It's Thursday night. Kenton, Tennessee, yes. It's a white squirrel winery. Kenton, Tennessee? Yeah, it's not that far. If there's anybody that's working on your credit hours, if you attend that meeting, you probably will get like two credits for being there. You're still working on your. I'm not for sure. Six o'clock, I know for sure.
You gotta know how to get there.
Most people get there about five thirty, like Rocky said. If you want to ride with somebody, call around and ask, you know, there's plenty. So if, if you're planning on going, just raise your hand for me so I can give a head count to Mr. Curtis. Okay. I counted nine. Okay, that's a good number. I told him today, I thought it might be somewhere around eight, so I was close. Okay, the next, um, announcement is next month, in October, the, um, Ms. Jennifer Wheatley and the Industrial Board will be feeding us again at five o'clock over in the small courtroom. So don't forget that. If you want to come and eat, um, be sure and be there about five o'clock. And I'm sure they're going to, um, give, inform us of some information that we might need to know. And the next announcement, and the last one that I have, is Commissioner Daryl Hicks from the sixth district called me today. And due to his work being so heavy and it's caused him not to be able to come to some of our meetings, he is resigning as of today. So we have a seat open in the sixth district. That's all my announcements. Anybody else? Yes?
Sheriff, a subject that got a lot of attention back in January, February, March. I received an email today, I'm just going to pass it on. Tennessee opioid abandonment council, community grant announcements of funding posted on September the sixteenth today. This is their second year, second go around of funding for grants. Uh, application portal will open November the twelfth. I'll send this email to Charles Cover, and should there be anybody on law enforcement, the mayor or the sheriff's office want to take an interview, looking further into this, so be it.
Okay, okay, thank you, Rocky. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, in light of what you just announced about Commissioner, uh, resigning because he could not be here to do his work, I think that's a noble thing to do. If you can't be here at a meeting, can't represent your district, is step aside and give the commission opportunity to appoint somebody else that, uh, uh, may be willing to serve. Uh, I'd like to see the commission, or the chairman, or the mayor, or the attorney, or a combination of three, to draft the letter. Each district should have three commissioners representing them, that's what was elected. Uh, and either ask Commissioner Stokes, first district, if he would either resign his seat and give us an opportunity to appoint somebody to that position, or to show up at the meeting to do what he was elected to do. Uh, but the people in the first district has two voices instead of three. And if he has no interest in coming, he needs to resign. And I'd like to see the county attorney to draft that. I'm going to put that on the county attorney to draft that letter and send it to Commissioner Price.
Certainly not mine, but I mean, you guys have to tell me to do so.
Do you want to make that in form of a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Does anyone oppose the letter? Okay. Motion carried. Anyone else? Any comments? Okay, then, um, we need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold. Anyone oppose?